Good evening, everyone. Welcome. What a great looking group in the house tonight. Welcome to the Town of Florence Town Council Meeting, Tuesday, June 17th at 6 o'clock. Ms. Garcia, roll call, please.
Mayor Eaton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Adam.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Buchalato.
Here.
Councilmember Maldonado.
Here.
Councilmember Bencina.
Here.
Councilmember Bedford.
We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Item number three and four, our moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance. Tonight, moment of silence, please keep our public safety professionals in your hearts, thoughts, and prayers as they work in this difficult world. I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, ten seventy-five, for its stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Item number five is our call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter, or may ask that a matter be put on future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or act on any member, or any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. All right, I do have one person signed up in house tonight, Ms. Bonnie Barriola.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Ms. Barriola, and may I say, once again, happy birthday.
Thanks. I am now eighty-six years old, most people, don't count me, this in my three minutes. Oh, oh. I don't mind telling you how old I am, then when you get old as I am, you look your age, so you don't care. But I sent each of you an email with suggestions. This is with item 6B. I trust you realize, I know I can only make suggestions and you all make the decisions. When I was working for the county, I was the planner who created both Centine Valley and the city of Maricopa, which are now the largest in population in Penal County. Unfortunately, I was not in charge of the main streets, only the subdivision interiors, and both now suffer from gridlock. I made the suggestions to you about Westland Village and its developers, so there hopefully will not be increased gridlock in that area once it is built out. Developers don't like to spend money on exterior streets, and of course, the home builders don't either. So, it's up to the municipality to ensure the streets are sufficient for the populations of new developments. And unless the exterior streets are addressed in the initial zoning, it doesn't happen. It was also suggested the developer, y'all let the developer develop Centennial Park Avenue to Adamsville Road. And on another topic, of the renaming, the park, Heritage Park, to the Jason Lopez Park, I fully agree. I was the one who helped design and build that park way back in the late nineteen-eighties. So, I think it is quite appropriate to rename it the Jason Lopez Park. You have my permission. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie, and we are glad you're here to give us that permission. Always glad to see you. Is there anyone else in house who would like to speak to the call to the public? Anybody online? See nobody online? Have no fear, if you think of something during the meeting, there's a second call to the public at the end. Item number six, so what I'm doing here is, we're moving some things around tonight. I will now move item 1096, Public Hearings and Presentations. I'd like to bring forward item 6C. After 6C, I would like to bring forth new business 13F. And we'll do them both. I'm sorry, what?
Are you wanting that new business item first, or are you wanting the proclamation first?
New business item, I'm sorry, thank you so much. I couldn't read your lips, I'm sorry, I was trying. So, new business item, 13F. So, first, I'd like to thank Councilmember Neal, Councilmember Buchalato for bringing this forward. And also Lisa for doing more than twenty years' worth of research, prior councils, prior council decisions, prior councils indecisions. And I, as I have learned, I did not know Jason Lopez, but I've met the family here tonight, and I've, these two have told me so much about, and how proud they were to be of friends, and how proud this town should be that he grew up here. So, with further ado, I would, item 13F is the authorization to rename Heritage Park to Jason Lopez Memorial Park. Item one, rescinding previous council action that designated only the playground in the memory of Jason Lopez. And two, approve the renaming of Heritage Park to Jason Lopez Memorial Park in its entirety. And three, form the Jason Lopez Memorial Park Ad Hoc Committee and direct a dedication ceremony to take place Saturday, December 27th, 2025, it's his birthday, correct? Yes. Oh, the 28th, on the 27th. So with that, I would like to open up council for any discussion.
Well, I know we still waiting on some of the family. Surprise. Kind of talked to the family and kind of misled them. Told them that we were just doing the proclamation to make the thirteenth Jason Lopez Day. But I love it that we're here in the place where he got wronged, to rename the entire park Jason Lopez Memorial Park. As a councilman, I'm embarrassed. As a go-for, I'm proud as hell. He deserves it.
Thank you.
So, Jason was a little bit older than I was, but I was friends with his brothers, and we do know the family very well, and I just wanted to say that this is long overdue, and just a small, a small token of what our town can do for his ultimate sacrifice. And I just wanted to say that throughout the years, you guys have kept his memory alive, and I'm hoping that we can help do the same with this park. And Corina, I'm sorry that your children did not get to play at this park and have it named after him twenty years ago, but I'm hoping one day that your grandchildren will, so.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, and I did not know Jason Lopez, but of course, I know of him. And I want to just pay my respects to the family and say how special an officer he was. And just to let you know, as Councilmember Buchalato and Councilmember Snake Neal said, sometimes decisions get made, and that all you hear out there, the public, is a decision. But you have to know, there are people that have fought for this for a long time and never gave up fighting. And so, I am just thrilled that we're able to do this today.
I too, and being new on the council and new to here, didn't know Officer Lopez. I read about his story when I, when he was honored over at Penal County this year. I support police and firefighters, and the loss of life just hits me hard, working with military in war zones and so on. So, as a council member, this is probably going to go down as the one thing that I'm going to love the most, and that's casting my vote to rename this park in his honor. I thank Lisa Bruce, and I thank Cliff, he's the lawyer, and didn't stop it, so.
Councilmember Bedford.
First and foremost, I would like to thank the family for coming out. Number two, it's an honor to be able to sit here and have the park named after your son. Thirdly, I'm new, as well as the council, so it's like, very proud and very honored. I too am a retired police officer, so I understand. And I'm excited to be able to be amongst these seven wonderful council members and give him honor in what he is due. So I thank you.
Councilmember Maldonado.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you for the family for coming out. Sometimes things don't move the way we want them to move in life. I saw that a lot in the service, and I didn't know Jason, but this is the way we can honor him and do it in a way that brings credit upon himself and those that he served with. So, thank you again, everybody, for coming out, and I'm glad to be a part of this decision.
Councilmember Neal.
I'm sorry, I, the other side of the family just got in, and I don't know if y'all missed it, or if you heard, I kind of misled y'all, just told you it was going to be the Jason Lopez Day, but we're actually naming the entire park Jason Lopez Memorial Park today. Family, when you see Lisa Garcia, give her a giant hug and a kiss. This lady is awesome. She did, she did this. Without her, we'd have probably been months off. She is the GOAT, she's awesome. Please, so when you see her, tell her thank you.
All right, with that, I will look for a motion for item 13F.
I make a motion that we approve the renaming of Heritage Park to Jason Lopez Memorial Park in its entirety.
I second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion with council? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, very good. Congratulations. So with that, the thing that you all came for, that didn't know about this other thing, is that we have a proclamation. It's item 6C, proclamation declaring June 13th of each year Deputy Jason Patrick Lopez Remembrance Day in Florence, Arizona. With that, I will turn it over to Councilmember Buchalato to read the proclamation, and then we'll get, take a break, and we'll get down, and we'll get some pictures.
Whereas Jason Lopez was raised in Florence, and we would like to celebrate his life and honor his death. And whereas on May 4th, 2001, Penal County Sheriff's Deputy Jason Patrick Lopez made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty while serving and protecting the citizens of Penal County. And whereas Deputy Lopez served the Penal County Sheriff's Office with honor and dedication for six years, and had been a sworn deputy for eighteen months, assigned the badge number of 613, that he earned with respect and admiration of his peers and the community. And whereas Deputy Lopez was only twenty-six years old, and is survived by his beloved wife, a three-year-old son, a one-month-old baby, and his devoted parents, both of whom also serve their community as employees of the Sheriff's Office Department. And whereas the community continues to mourn the loss of a son, a husband, a father, and a peace officer, whose life was cut tragically short in the performance of his duty. And whereas, it is fitting and proper that we, the citizens of Florence and all of Penal County, remember the life, legacy, and sacrifice of Deputy Jason Patrick Lopez, and honor his unwavering commitment and justice to public safety. Now, therefore...
All right, so therefore, I, Keith Eaton, Mayor of the Town of Florence, Arizona, on behalf of the town council and the people of Florence, do hereby proclaim June 13th of each year as Deputy Jason Patrick Lopez Remembrance Day. And in the Town of Florence, in the Town of Florence, and encourage all citizens to take a moment to reflect on the courage, sacrifice of Deputy Lopez, to honor the men and women who serve in law enforcement, and to extend our deepest gratitude to the Lopez family. We celebrate his life and his loved ones, and we will always remember the fine man who was raised in Florence, Arizona. So, there you go. Thank you very much for sharing. All right, so with the family, everybody will join us over here, we'd love to get some pictures with you guys. All right, so one of the things that I neglected to do, and thank you, Jeff, for reminding me, is to ask the family if anybody wanted to say anything. So, at this time, if you would like to say something, we'll turn the microphone over to the family. Or either one of you guys.
Well, I would like to say thank you to the Town of Florence City Council members for acknowledging this, first of all, the park, I mean, that's a long time coming, and it's a big surprise. Also, for acknowledging that June 13th will always be Jason Lopez Remembrance Day. That means more than you know to our family, and we really appreciate every single one of you guys. I know there was, years back, that it could have gone through, and it dropped, but I guess sometimes it just takes the perfect members to be together, to get this going. And we are beyond appreciated of you guys. So thankful, so thankful. So, thank you, thank you again.
My name's Sonarain, and I'm one of Jay Lopez's best friends, partners, me and his buddy, Jay Vegas, over there, we run around together, we were all baby dippies together, worked in the jail together, worked at Gary's Goodly Pizza together, drank a lot of beer in the deserts around here together. Legally, of course, yes. I'll tell the real story, seven years after I retire. This is, this is real close to me, this is real special for me. I didn't know what the heck I was doing twenty-four years ago, but I tried to start this back then, when I was a deputy, and unfortunately, was met with resistance and some covert things that I wasn't aware of, that shut this whole thing down. So, I really appreciate you guys, everybody on this council, to keep this going and to keep pushing it, and to make this happen for the family, for his children, you know, all of his friends, that, one of the things we always said is that we're never going to let his name or his memory die. And this is just one huge step towards completing that goal for the rest of us here who have been left behind, is making sure he's always remembered, and now, every single day, when people go to this park, they'll remember. So, thank you for that, I appreciate that, and go for strong.
Hey, this is about the family, this isn't about me, but I'd just like to thank the town council, just so you guys get a grasp of how long this has been coming, is, you now know that Jason Lopez's badge number is 613. When I started with the sheriff's office, 788 was my sergeant in the academy. 696 was the first person that yelled at me, in a good way, in the academy. That's how long it's been, I never had the opportunity to know the hero of Jason Lopez, but I know the hero's story, and it's just so great that they're honoring him in my town, where it belongs, and thank you very much.
All right, thank you guys very much, we appreciate you all being here. Oh, hang on, man.
I just want to say a few things. Thank you, thank you very much. And then, second thing is, the night, he came to me in a dream, because I was worried, I was expecting him to come home, and he told me, "Dad, don't worry, I'm okay." Then I knew, everybody's going to be okay. And I want to thank you, people, all of you, the family, the friends, everybody, thank you so much. We waited a long time for this day, and it's here, we got it. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much, all. And the dedication, the dedication to the park, just a reminder, we'll be in touch with you all the time, and the dedication will be on his birthday. So, yep, so we'll have that ready. So, thank you all very much for coming.
Working on the AC, I said I'm working on the AC, just trying to figure it out.
All right, we are back, and thank you so much, that was quite an emotional tribute, the family. I will continue with item 6A, this is a public hearing to receive comments concerning a series 007 beer and wine bar license, application submitted by Vicki Rombos, for barrels and beans proposed at 231 North Main Street, B, Florence, Arizona. And for discussion and possible action, to forward a recommendation of said license to Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control. With that, I will open up a public hearing, is there anyone in the house tonight? I'm sorry.
I have a few things I'm required to say first.
Okay.
The town clerk's office did receive the application from the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control. We posted, can you hear? We posted the liquor license for twenty days, we did receive zero comments on the liquor license. So at this time, there are no comments either for nor against her.
Okay, thank you so much. This is my first liquor license, if you guys haven't figured it out yet, so bear with me. Thank you very much, Lisa, for that. So with that, now, I will open up the public hearing. If there's anyone in house that would like to speak to this, or online, please come forward, or raise your hand if you're online. Okay, seeing no one in house, or seeing no one online, I'm going to now close the public hearing for that, and I will open it up, this is an approval that needs to be done to, forward to the Arizona Department of Liquor License, so is there any discussion with council? Councilmember Maldonado.
Thank you, Mayor. So, as liaison for the Chamber of Commerce, I think this is great, variety of things, having a variety of things to do downtown is great, and I'm really, really excited about what it's going to look like. I know Perry and I got to talk a little bit earlier, but like I said, this is, this is great that we're thriving. Like, when I came here ten years ago, this was not like this, so this is awesome, I'm so excited. Thank you.
Councilmember Buchalato.
I'm very excited for the family, I'm very excited that I can go and taste me some wines, hopefully, and I'm very sad for my pocketbook when my husband walks in there, because he's, we've been trying to make it in there, we haven't been able to yet, just because of some other things that are kind of going on, but we are very excited, and we cannot wait to support your business, and, you know, we welcome you, and we thank you for choosing Florence.
Councilmember Bencina.
I've been in there and watching it come to life, but can we ask you to come up and give a couple minutes of what it's going to be, so people that are watching or sitting here can go, what is it?
Absolutely.
Good evening, my name is Vicki, and this is George, he's our operational manager.
First and foremost, I want to thank the council for the time, I am so thrilled to be here. Florence, grew up here as a kid, coming back home, back to my roots, coming back from Texas, wife, new baby, opening up this family business. They are a wonderful family as well, that I'm partnering with, I am so excited about what we're about to do. It is looking like we are going to just bring a little of that fine, that fine quality, you know, kind of clean it up a little bit. you know, kind of clean it up a little bit. It's gonna be nice sandwiches, paninis, we're looking at the wine and beer bar. We're not looking for that rowdy crowd whatsoever, looking for that breakfast, lunch. It's gonna be fun, clean, and hopefully very successful, and I thank you all for your time.
We specialize in our coffees, our wine spritzers, our mimosas, you know, just a nice place to have a refreshing drink.
Very good.
Oh, and everyone knows Perry's gun store, right?
Can I get the barrels in there?
Yes, barrels are in there.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. We're honored to be a part of downtown Florence, and we're so excited to be just serving you. We love Florence. Thank you.
Can't wait to host you all.
Thank you all very much, we look forward to it. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve and move the recommendation forward to Arizona Department of Liquor License.
I'm sorry, I tried to get in before y'all got up there. That store, actually that store, I worked at that store when I was in high school, when it used to be the bottle shop. And I would really enjoy going in there, kickback and having a drink, instead of them working me like a two dollar sugar mule like they used to back in the day. I'm real excited for y'all, hope y'all the best, and it's just more excitement in Florence. Good luck.
Thank you. Now I'm looking for a motion to approve this and pass it on to the state.
I make a motion, let's see here, we approve a Series seven beer and wine license application submitted by Vicky Rombos for barrels and beans proposed at 231 North Main Street, number B Florence, Arizona, and for discussion, I don't have to go there, so I'll stop it there.
I second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Not seeing any, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, very good, thank you, congratulations. Item six B is hold a public hearing on rezoning of Westland Village and adoption of ordinance number 760-25. An ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona approving a zone change for approximately 40 acre property on the southwest corner of the Butte Avenue and Centennial Park Avenue from rural agriculture RA10 to single-family residence R16 called Westland Village, assess a parcel number APN 200-05-001H with stipulations.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. It's good to be with you this evening. As Mari works to load up the PowerPoint, I'll let her do that. I will start the presentation, so we will be conducting a public hearing tonight in the consideration of an adoption for a rezoning on, at the southwest corner of Butte and I'll be giving a brief presentat-, thank you, Mari. I'll be giving a brief presentation, and I will be turning it over to the applicant's representative to continue the discussion and presentation of their rezoning request. Again, this project is located at the southwest corner of Butte and Centennial Park Avenue. The site is 40 acres. The site is currently zoned rural agriculture RA10. The applicant has applied for rezoning to move to R16, single-family residential. This is a hard zoning district that calls for a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. To orient you to the adjacent land uses, to the north, there are several existing ranchettes zoned R1R. To the east is Sunrise Estates, zoned single-family residential or R16. The southern boundary is a drainage channel and the Bisbee Ranch Residential Community currently under construction, and to the west, there's an undeveloped 40 acre parcel zoned territorial square. The, this is simply for a change of zoning. Again, they are seeking a change of zoning from RA10 to R16, and this shows a survey of the site. Again, it's a 40 acre site. There was a public meeting that was held at the community center on May 21st, 2025, from six to seven. No members of the public attended that meeting. Notice for that neighborhood meeting was mailed to residents within 300 feet of the property. The applicant mailed a separate notice of the Planning and Zoning Commission and Town Council Public Hearings to all property owners within 300 feet on the site. And a sign was placed on the property advertising the public hearing, and there was an ad posted in the local Pinal Dispatch newspaper. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to the applicant's representative to give a more detailed presentation on the rezone request. Thank you.
Thank you, AJ.
Good evening, Mayor Eaton, Vice Mayor Adam, and council members. I'm Jason Sanks with I Plan Consulting, 3317 South Higley Road, Gilbert, Arizona, 85297. And, wow, she's right on time. Okay, perfect. I have a brief presentation. Thank you to staff for doing the initial presentation. We're happy to be here. We were here just a few weeks ago with PNC, and we really welcomed their unanimous recommendation of approval to the council. So for tonight, yes, we are requesting a, as a quote, straight rezoning, it's not a PUD, just to kind of cover the highlights for Westland Village, just to reiterate that we are complying with the town's adopted general plan for town center. We do see that this project will be a catalyst for future commercial entertainment development at the territorial square project, or territorial square, yeah, exactly, project. This will include building the roads, I think we had a member of the public speak at large earlier about the concerns of that, but this certainly commits to dedications and improvements for roadways as required already by the city. Extending utilities that will service the project, development does pay for itself, and this will be bringing more activity to downtown Florence. So, let me just, over here, I'm used to using a keyboard, sorry about that. Oh, okay, thank you. The project will bring more rooftops and families to support territorial square and downtown commercial. It's not working, sorry. Oh, I see. You have the keyboard? Oh, thank you. All right. And then again, it'll provide housing for current and future residents and employees, as you'd imagine. And it's compatible, it'll be compatible with the adjacent land uses, you already saw on the map that the staff put up earlier, we're surrounded by R16 similar zoned properties to the north and to the east. So this is pretty much extending the land use pattern that the community already knows in this immediate area with like-minded development, so. This again will reiterate that, you see that bright yellow to the north and the east, it's all kind of R16, so this is the same. I know that you saw something else before you, not too long ago, this is going to be less dense and more directly matching what's to the north and to the east. You may also recall at one point, there was concern, I believe, from the adjacent landowner to the west, the winery. We are fortunate to be here today with a letter of support from them, that they do support our request as revised for R16 straight rezoning, so that is honestly very helpful for us. This shows the zoning districts, again, reiterating what I just said. Well, I think many of us have already been talking about roadways, traffic improvements, and I just wanted to kind of come full circle to that, that we have had a traffic impact analysis prepared and submitted to the city for review. This is standard procedure, so they can evaluate what roadways need to be dedicated, what roadways will need to be improved, what can they anticipate for levels of service on adjacent roadways before and after the project were to be built, and along with what improvements would be necessary when the development actually ensues. So at the time of rezoning, the city can tell the developer, which we are in agreement with, to agree to dedicate roadways, public streets, as part of this project, which we will do at the time of development. The zoning will confirm that. As well, we will confirm our financial obligations to do those roadway improvements as required by the city's subdivision guidelines and other protocols. So dedications for Butte and Centennial Park Place will be included with this as a condition of approval for the zoning, if you support the request. The road improvements will also be made for those roads. This includes median and center turn lanes for the future entrances of the project. Because it's a straight rezone, you're not seeing like a plat level of detail, that will come forward under a future separate formal application to the city. We did look at levels of service for all of the intersections before and after, and they will still continue to operate at acceptable levels of service as reviewed by the city's traffic engineer. In summary, reiterate, this is in compliance with your general plan, so as you know, you have to support the general plan, the zoning case would do so. Again, it's a catalyst for future development, it will support territorial square, it's providing more housing for current and new residents, it will include project improvements for traffic circulation and connectivity in the area, the zoning is compatible, it's not PUD, and again, we have the Windmill Winery in support, and unanimous PNC support from their June 5th hearing just a few weeks ago, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, is there any questions for the applicant before we open the public hearing? Councilmember Bencina.
Welcome. One thing, you know, as council members, we've been frustrated, and planning and zoning has been frustrating for years, because all these PUDs have been signed years ago. As I've looked at everyone that's come through, I see a bunch of the same thing being built in this town, okay? Same style house, very few amenities, and then I look out, and we're on Felix and Hunt, to Felix and Arizona Farms, and we have one subdivision that's gonna build over 2,000 homes. They're gonna put a swimming pool in, they're gonna put pickleball courts, and they're gonna put us some small parks in that'll support 2,300 homes. We have another one that's putting in some parks with some basketball and so on, then we got a big one that, you know, is gonna put a swimming pool for every 550 homes that they put in that 12,000, plus big parks and so on. So my challenge to you is gonna be, what are you gonna do to make your subdivision better than the one behind it, or the others that are out here? Because if you put nothing in there to support your residents, with a pool or park or whatever, and your houses look the same, you're gonna struggle to sell your houses along with the 7,000, they're gonna be built out on 287, and the 4,000. So I hope you will come back with a plan that says, we want to make our subdivision one of the best you're gonna see in the town of Florence, before we start saying, we want to see more amenities inside this development. The road issue that Bonnie brought up, I'm gonna leave that up to the town and AJ, as far as I'm concerned, council members may have something to say on it, but for them to work that issue out, and as we go forward on this project. But I hope you all will bring back a beautiful project that I go, this is different, okay? Not being seen by anybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, not seeing any, thank you very much, thank you for coming back, you listened to council, and you brought back a product that we thought was more adaptable for us, so thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Mayor.
So with that, this is a public hearing, so we now open up a public hearing for this rezoning of the Westland Village. If there's anyone in house or anyone online that would like to speak to this public hearing, please raise your hand or come to the podium. Okay, Ms. Barriola?
Bonnie Barriola, Maricopa County. But I, I know I sent each of you a detailed explanation, so I'm not going to repeat it here, but y'all have it, I'm just very concerned about the traffic situation, or the roadways adjacent to it, because some of them are incomplete, and I just trust that, and the reason I'm concerned is because in the past, as council member Bencini says, they'd come in and say, well, this was approved, we have no recourse but to build it just like this, and they don't build the roadways to accommodate the people there, and they do as little as possible on the roadways, is just, was my concern, but y'all have my suggestions. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Not seeing anyone else or online, I'm gonna now close the public hearing on this adoption, and I'm gonna ask for a motion and a second from council.
I make a motion, we adopt the ordinance number 760-25, an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona approving a zone change for the approximately 40 acre property on southwest corner of Butte Avenue and Centennial Park Avenue from rural agriculture RA10 to single-family residential R-16 called Westland Village.
I second.
We have a motion and a second, any other conversation or any discussion amongst council?
Mayor, is that with stipulations?
Oh, yes, sorry, I should read that. With stipulation, yes, please.
Access parcel number 200-05-001H, PL is Planning and Zoning-25-0003 with stipulations.
Okay, is the second still okay on that, Councilmember Bedford?
Correct.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Not seeing any, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you, thank you very much. Item seven is adjourned to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One. I need a motion to adjourn to CFD One.
I make a motion, we adjourn to CFD One.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you, we are now in CFD One. Item seven A is an ordinance number 122-25, discussion possible adoption of an ordinance of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One, Pinal County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the community facilities district, subject to taxation of certain sum upon each $100 of valuation, sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for community facilities expenses for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2026. Mr. Duddy.
Good evening, board of members, this is the final step in the budget process for FY26. On June 3rd, we held a public hearing on this levy, we're back tonight to adopt it. There's two levies in CFD One, there's a GeoBond debt service levy of 2.25, and an operation and maintenance levy of .3 for a combined total of 2.55 per $100 of net assessed
Okay, thank you very much, Carl, for that. Before I open it up, for any discussion with council, I do want to read a statement pursuant to law, state law, this ordinance, if adopted by the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One, will levy a secondary property tax rate for the fiscal year 2025-26. The ordinance must be adopted no later than the 3rd Monday in August. Comments were received from the public in connection with the public hearing held by District Number One, CFD District One, relating to the proposed ordinance. Upon adoption of the ordinance, the district clerk is directed to provide a certified copy of the ordinance to Pinal County, which is the assessing and collecting authority of District Number One. With that, I'll open it up to council for any discussion. Councilmember Bencina.
Having lived, currently living in Merrill Ranch and part of CFD Two, and joining the council, and I've watched last year's vote that actually raised CFD One, lowered CFD Two a little bit, I've done some research so I can try to explain some of the things. So, in 2019, 2020, the CFD property tax levy was .42 cents. At the same time, in CFD Two, it was $3.25, big difference. It went up to 168 the following year, as CFD Two stayed 325 all the way through 2024. 2025 was the first time it took a big jump, and it went from 39.3980 to 1.50, and that was a big jump, and it hit people's property tax. So this is gonna be a big one, that's gonna have to be explained, so that these people understand that these bonds gotta get paid off, that will be paid off, and this property tax hopefully one day will go away. So CFD one has had a low property tax for a long time while CFD two's been paying a hefty one, so. And that was part because of the lawsuit with Poltey and Merrill Ranch that kept that back as Poltey continued to produce. So I just wanted to highlight the difference for any of my friends that might be watching that will beat me up tomorrow, so.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, councilmember Bucelato?
I, I just wanted to speak for myself when I say that this has been explained to, to myself in a very educating manner, and I have learned a lot since being on council. And CFDs were not something that I knew when, when first coming on, and I just wanted to thank our staff, Cliff, Bruce, Lisa, for taking the time to be so thorough with us about this and explaining why, why not, pros and cons, and allowing us to have the correct and improper information to make an educated decision tonight. So I just wanted to thank you guys for all of your help in this.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, not seeing any other comments, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion, we approve ordinance number 122-25, ordinance, ordinance of Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number One, Pinal County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the community facility district, subject to taxation of certain sum upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for community facilities expenses for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2026.
We have a motion? Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion with council? All right, Lisa, could we get a roll call vote, please?
Of course. Councilmember Maldonado?
Yea.
Councilmember Bencina?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedford?
Yes.
Councilmember Neal?
Yes.
Councilmember Bucelato?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Adam?
Yes.
Mayor Eaton?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. Item seven, item seven B, we're still in Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District One, discussion approval disapproval of the June 3rd, 2025 minutes of the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One. Everyone has had a chance to review the minutes. Is there any questions? Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of June 3rd, 2025 of the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One.
We have a motion?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not seeing any. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you so much. Item eight, at this time, we will adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One. I need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number One.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not seeing any. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Thank you so much for that. Yes, okay. I, I had too many papers on my desk here. Item nine is adjourned to the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two. I need a motion to adjourn to CFD one.
I make a motion, we adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not seeing any. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, item nine A, ordinance number 222-25, discussion possible adoption of an ordinance for Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two, Pinal County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the community facilities district, subject to taxation of a certain sum upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for community facilities expenses for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2026. Mr. Dunning.
Members of the board, like CFD one, we held a public hearing on June 3rd. Tonight is adoption. The debt service levy is 2.671 and the administration is .3 for a combined total of 2.971 per $100 of net assessed value.
All right. Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for Mr. Dunning? Councilmember Bencina?
Well, this one's a little shocker. I live in CFD two and it's going to go up, so, so yeah, CFD two will be rising. So as I raised property taxes on, on CFD one, I ended up doing it on my, my own house. So anyway, I just wanted to, hopefully it'll come down again, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other comments? All right, not seeing any. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion, we approve ordinance number 222-25, an ordinance of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities, Facilities District Number Two, Pinal County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of property within the community's facilities, facilities district, subject to taxation of a certain sum upon each $100 of evaluation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds from the community facility, facilities expenses for the fiscal year ending 30th day of June 2026.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not seeing any. Madam Clerk, could I get a roll call vote on this as well, please?
Yes. Councilmember Bencina?
Yes.
Councilmember Bucelato?
Aye.
Councilmember Bedford?
Yes.
Councilmember Neal?
Yes.
Councilmember Maldonado?
Yea.
Vice Mayor Adam?
Yes.
Mayor Eaton?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you so much. Item nine B, discussion approval disapproval of June 3rd, 2025 minutes of the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two. We've once again had a chance to review any of the minutes. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Garcia? Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion that we approve the June 3rd, 2025 minutes of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not seeing any. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, thank you so much. Item 10, we were now adjourned from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two. I need a motion to adjourn, please.
I make a motion, we adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not seeing any. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you so much. Item 11 is the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member objects at the time the agenda item is called. Ladies and gentlemen, we have items A through G tonight. Any council member want anything pulled?
I'd like to pull item A just for discussion. We seem to run through approval of money pretty quick and some, some residents told me that we're doing this too quickly without giving a description of what's going on. So Tim, I hope you can just give us a quickie, please.
Did you say 11A?
Yes.
Okay, at, at this time, then I will move to approve consent agenda, items B through G.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda, items B through G.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, not seeing any. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? All right, item A is the authorization to enter into a contract, Casa Grande Pumping Service for sludge hauling services at the town of Florence wastewater treatment plants in the amount not to exceed $113,625 over a five-year period. Mr. Wayne Scott, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Just to kind of explain, we don't have, we currently do not have sludge processing facility set up at the North Wastewater Plant, so we went out and got bids for Casa Grande Septics, the lowest bid. So they actually haul sludge to our south plant and we run it off the belt filter press that's then sent to the landfill for disposal out there.
Thank you. I actually toured a wastewater plant by Epcor and saw the sludge, so I know, I know what you're talking about, so thank you for.
All right. Councilmember Bucelato?
I, I just wanted to say that you guys have done a great job with trying to secure the best bid, and I know sometimes the lowest isn't the best, but I just wanted to say, you know, with all, all going on and all the work that you guys are doing with wastewater treatment, I just wanted to commend you and your team and say good job.
Thank you.
Councilmember Neal?
I just wanted to, Bencina, I understand what you're saying. Sometimes it does take the second to step back and say to the public, this is something that has to be done. It's, it's, it's something that we would be in violation if we don't do it. So I think that is something that we should let out to our public to know when, when things have to be done, because we get a lot of questions about stuff and it's like, we cannot stop it, we have to do it. So I just think that would be nice for the public to know.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Not seeing any, and any other questions for Mr. Wayne Scott? I'll move, or I'll ask for a motion to approve consent item A. I make a motion, we approve consent item A, authorize, authorization to enter into a contract with Casa Grande Pumping Service Incorporated for sludge hauling services at the town of Florence's wastewater treatments plants in the amount not to exceed $113,625 over the five-year term.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not seeing any. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Next is item 12, unfinished business. Item 12A is an ordinance 757-25, discussion approval disapproval, an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the town, subject to taxation of certain sum upon each $100 valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for general municipal expenses for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2026. Mr. Dunning.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, two budget items left. This is your property tax. We supplied an option sheet on the dais tonight. When we had the budget workshop, it was, there was a tie, three and three of same levy and same rate. In the budget that we presented that night, option one was in the revenue budget, and so we were able to, we used the lower rate to make sure we could balance the fund. And when we advertised, we advertised the higher rate in case council decides to go that route, so. With that, I'll turn it over to you to decide an option.
Okay, thank you so much. So just to, just to clarify, when we did have that budget workshop, we were kind of up in the air a little bit, and as you said, we based this, the budget on the lower option, but advertised for the second option, which is the higher option, which basically the higher option is not raising the rate. The same rate is what we have right now is the 1.02. The only raise would be the valuation of one's property.
Yeah, as properties value go up, so if, option two would be a 3.9% increase because property values increase.
But have, because of property values themselves, not because we're raising.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, very good. I'll open it up for council for discussion. Councilmember Bencina?
I know I'm taking some time, but I, but I prepare for these things, so knowing where we were out of the work session, so I've done some research and, you know, Arizona cities and towns are limited to amount that can raise yearly in property taxes. They can generally increase the amount collected by up to 2% plus any additional tax revenue generated off of new construction once those new homes come online. Since 2021, the town has approved tax levies below the maximum amount allowed, which is reduced, you know, that amount has reduced even though we've seen an increase with home prices and so on. For our residents, I did some, did some checking. If we maintain the levy at 10289, it means somebody that purchased, has a home purchase price of $173,000 here in the town of Florence, you're going to see a $1.75 increase in your property tax. If you have a home in, here in the town of Florence at $270,000, you'll see an increase of $4.75. My house at Merrill Ranch, I will see an increase of $13.75. These are small amounts compared to, to bring the essentials that we need to bring to the residents if, to maintain this rate. I also looked at other cities and towns close to Florence for comparison. Quinn Creek just reduced from 163 to 155 in this current budget. Coolidge is at 15368. Casa Grande's at .9643, but they have a lot of different taxes on hotels and different things and a lot of revenue from sales revenue. Maricopa is at $3.64, and Eloy is at 10115. So I hope that we can keep our tax levy at 10289 this year.
All right, thank you so much. Any other discussion? All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve with the option indicated in your motion.
I make a motion, we approve option two is the one I want, I think. Ordinance 757-25, an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the town of Florence, subject to taxation of certain sum upon each 100 of evaluation sufficient to raise the amount of estimated to be received from the funds from the general municipal expenses for the fiscal year ending 30th of June 2026.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not seeing any other. Ms. Garcia, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bencina?
Yes.
Councilmember Maldonado?
Yea.
Councilmember Bedford? Councilmember Neal?
Yes.
Councilmember Bucelato? Vice Mayor Adam?
Yes.
Mayor Eaton?
Yes.
It is unanimous.
That is the final budget item, so again, I want, oh, wait a minute.
One more.
I'm sorry. Oh, there's not, one more.
Yeah.
I'm just getting excited here. We're almost there, Carl. And it's my first budget, so as, as we're excusing me for all kinds of stuff tonight. Item B is discussion approval disapproval to adopt ordinance 758-25, an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the streetlight improvement districts 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9, subject to taxation of certain sum upon each $100 evaluation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for streetlight operations for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2026. All right, Carl, here we go.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, we have nine slids. We're placing levies on seven. Slid four and slid seven have ample fund balance to cover electrical costs for next year.
All right. Thank you so much for that, Carl. So is there any questions for Carl by councilmembers? Councilmember Bencina?
Sorry again, but I don't have any questions. I just have a statement because I've learned all about slids in the last couple of weeks. And I understand the person, the purpose of slid improvement districts is to help cover the cost utilities and repairs. However, I'm confused about why residents in new developments have to pay slid tax while residents in Florence who do not live in new subdivisions are not, are exempt from this tax. It seems fair that all residents, residents should contribute it, but implementing this would require a citizen's vote, so that's impossible. Regarding new developments and develop, the developers are the ones that have agreed to this as they develop it. It's not the citizens as you disagree to it when you buy a home. I also want to bring up that I disagree with how the slid tax is done. Slid tax is based on a, a dollar value per $100 assess, assessed value. That streetlight means the same to the person that has the lower price home on the street as it does the person that has the expensive home, but the person that has expensive doesn't. There's a way to do it that gives equal, equal appropriation out to all the residents by taking all the streetlights within the slid, dividing up the cost, and that's what everybody pays within that slid. I live in slid three, and the interesting thing that I found out was that we pay for Hunt Highway, so, and slid one pays for Felix. I don't know why those can't be taken out of the slid and, and charged to the town as a possibility in the future, because it makes no sense that I'm paying for Hunt Highway when everybody uses Hunt Highway in this town and so on, so that's just my comments on the slid and, and that I've learned.
Thank you. Councilmember Bucelato.
First part of this is, I wanted to know if we needed to adjust what this says in here, because it says levying the assessed valuation of property within the districts one through nine. Is there a certain adjustment we would need with four and seven not being in that? Or is that just a technical term that we leave in there when we're?
So, we do have in the ordinance, those two districts with the zero dollar value.
Okay, I just didn't know, just for the record, if, because people think it's one through nine, and it's just missing those two. Okay. And then the second part, I guess I kind of understand what you're saying a little bit, Mr. Bencina, but it's also the same reason why those residents can't utilize your amenities. Some of those things were done, some of those things were done, I think, after the fact, but I don't know, maybe we can bring that back and explain it one day on why that is the way that that is to help. Because what I don't want is us and them when we're all Florence. That's just something that's personal to my heart, been here my whole life, and that's just something that I don't want it to become, us versus them. But maybe we can explain that a little bit later on, why these things are the way that they are, and if it's something that can be changed.
It was based on new growth pays for itself. As, you bet. Lisa, can you explain further?
Hello, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to say that at the time when Florence experienced with slids and understood slids, there were already the subdivisions that were currently in place. What it requires, it requires an election, and the property owners have to sign off on it. So, if you have a current state, everyone that lives in that area of Florence that was prior to us developing an ordinance to have growth pay for itself, they have a very minimal streetlight. And when developers come in, a selling point is safety, security, and extra streetlights. And they do agree to pay for this slid to be able to. But all of the new developments since that time have a slid, so no matter if you are in north of the river or south of the river, you do have a slid in every new area of Florence.
All right. With that, and so, yeah, so maybe in the future, we could just take a look at that and have a discussion on that come next budget time. Thank you so much. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance number 758-25, an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the streetlight improvement districts 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, subject to taxation of certain sum upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for streetlight operations for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2026.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion with councilmembers? Not seeing any. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, thank you so much again. So, now I'll do this again. So, Carl, thanks again, once again, for this budget season, and thanks to our two councilmembers that sit on that budget committee, thanks to our staff. And so, we are more than happy, and I'm sure you are, to be past this right now, so. Thank you very much. Item 13 is new business. Discussion approval, disapproval to enter into an agreement with Arcatis to provide environmental consulting support services for the South wastewater treatment plant, North wastewater treatment plant, and development of the Eldorado North wastewater treatment plant and water facilities in a total amount not to exceed $326,996. Manager Walsh.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, good evening. This is just a continuation of Arcatis providing project management and engineering services for our south plant, which is under consent decree, for our north plant, which is under consent decree, and also for the development of our wastewater and water plants via Eldorado and Polte. I will go ahead and advise council that with their involvement, we have met all of our deadlines currently, as far as the consent orders are met, and we've also saved, I think, the town a central amount of money with them involving in our processes moving forward.
Thank you very much, and thank you for that explanation. The RCA is very good. Thank you for that little extra. As it's been stated more than once, that we do have a lot going on with our wastewater facilities, and it's nice to hear positive things coming our way, so. With that, I'll open it up for any questions for the manager. Not seeing any, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we enter an agreement, approve to enter into agreement with Arcatis to provide environmental consulting support services for the South wastewater treatment plant, North wastewater treatment plant, and the development of the Eldorado wastewater treatment plant and water facilities in the total amount not to exceed $326,996.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not seeing any. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? All right, thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, council.
Item 13B, discussion approval, disapproval to enter into a health and wellness benefits consultant services, professional services contract with Gary L. Johnson Associates for an initial three-year term with one optional two-year extension at a cost of $32,000 a year, for a total cost of the contract not to exceed $160,000. Good evening, Ms. Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. This evening, I come before you asking that you approve the contract with Gary Johnson and Associates for the five-year term not to exceed $160,000. Our current benefit consulting contract expires on June 30th, so this year, to do our due diligence, we did go out for an RFP or proposals, so that we did a competitive comparison. We did receive two proposals, which are on file with the clerk's office. Mr. Gary Johnson's association, they came well under the other proposal, and they are going to provide the same services that they've been providing to the town and to our employees for the last five years, hopefully for the next five years. So, we're excited to ask for this authorization.
All right, thank you so much. Any questions for HR Director Wilson?
I just have one, Catherine. I'd like to work through Bruce to get a meeting, just to go over how this thing works.
Okay, that's fine. We can do that.
Okay, any other questions? Councilmember Bucelato.
I just wanted to say that it, when he comes and he speaks, or a representative comes and speaks, they really do try to get the best rate for the town and for the staff. And so, I'm glad that they came in and were able to work a number that works possibly for you guys, so.
And also, just to let you know, on the backside, their entire staff works tirelessly to serve our employees. We've had several issues that have come up through the years where they have helped the employees to get through the process in billing and getting their insurance expedited to go onto Cobra when they've needed to, so they're extraordinary with customer service. We're not just a number to them, we're a true valued partner, so I appreciate them totally.
Councilmember Neal.
Ever since I've sat on the council, every year, that cat come back and he fights for the best rates for our employees year in, year out. I'm very happy to see our employees in their hands for, I wish we can go out a longer contract with him. Wish he'd come over to the county and do a little something for my paycheck. But they really do, every year, they find the best rates for our employees, and that's, that's great.
And Eric did apologize that he couldn't be here this evening. He's on vacation with his family, well-earned, so that's why he's not here this evening.
All right, Vice Mayor.
I would just like to give credit to you, because I believe that when you have a vendor like that, that's been with us a long time, they go the extra mile and they provide the extra service. I think a lot has to do with their trust and faith in the working relationship, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Not seeing any, and I want to thank you too, and I echo that. I have worked on the other side of this and worked with them, and they've done a good job. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve to enter into a health and wellness benefits consultant services, professional service contract with Gary L. Johnson and Associates Incorporated for an initial three-year term with one optional two-year extension at a cost of $32,000 a year, for a total cost of the contract not to exceed $160,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not seeing any. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much, Catherine.
Thank you.
Item 13C, discussion approval, disapproval to authorize payment to the public safety personnel retirement system for the unfunded liability of $2,024,994. Mr. Dudding.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, as we come to an end of fiscal year '25, in the general fund, we have budget capacity. And at the end of the year, we always like to take a look at our PSPRS, that's the Public Safety Retirement System, and try to pay down our unfunded liability. Currently, the unfunded liability is $2,024,994, and we have budget capacity to make that payment.
All right, thank you for that. I will make a comment on that, because I am very familiar with PSPRS. I will tell you that there are many cities, fire districts, towns, that can't even come close to fulfilling their payoff on this. And I think because we can, it is the dedication of ours team that has put that there, and I do appreciate that. I think we're probably one of a few that can say that we are, we are paid down to this amount. So, with that, I'll ask any other councilmember have any questions? Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we authorize a payment to the public safety personnel retirement system for the unfunded liability of $2,024,994.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion with council? Not seeing any. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? All right, thank you, Carl.
Thank you, council.
Item 13D, approval for Florence Fire and Medical Department to purchase three new LifePack 35 cardiac heart monitors from Stryker Sales LLC in an amount not to exceed $191,111.63. Good evening, Chief Snyder.
Good evening, Mayor Eaton, Vice Mayor Adams, members of the council. This CIP project was originally to purchase two new heart monitors, but when staff started investigating the advance in technology that the heart monitors have now, they realized that even having the third one as a backup, our older ones that are eight years old now, having those as a backup, they don't integrate like these new monitors integrate now, which is why we brought forward the request to purchase three of these. Finance does have it in the budget, as stated in the RCA. These monitors work very well with a number of other pieces of equipment that we use on medical incidents. Therefore, we'd like to purchase all three in one purchase if we could.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Any questions? Councilmember Bucelato.
I just wanted to say, as somebody that has utilized your services recently, that I am very appreciative of what you and your team do, how fast, how prompt, how well you are in just kind of explaining what's happening, what's going on, and what the plan is. And I just wanted to tell you guys that, for me personally, I will always support my fire and my police, because you guys are needed. And, you know, I didn't expect to be 43 going through a heart-related issue, but here we are, and I just wanted to say, you know, you never know when you're going to need it, and the one thing you need is the monitors and the equipment to be able to handle any situation, so. Just wanted to say, you know, thank you and kudos to you guys for all you do.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Maldonado.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I just wanted to ask, with the old ones, you said they're nine years old, right?
Yeah, they're about eight years old.
Eight, eight years old? So, when it comes time to dispose of those, will it go through the same process as some of like the other stuff? Through a bidding process, or it just gets disposed of? Or I was just, my reasoning is behind it, is if there's any, like 501Cs out there that don't have anything, and that would this apply, so you don't have to do the whole harness agreement thing, if this is something that's viable?
Yeah, this is a little bit of an unusual process, because these monitors, although they're eight years old, they can be refurbished, so this purchase is with the trade-in of three of our monitors. So, they'll be taking three of ours. The others that we have are much older and not even useful for that.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Bencina.
Me, like Councilman Bucelato, have had to use your services. I'm just glad you didn't have to use the compression one on me. It's nice to know, when I spent my day with the fire department and I asked the question, and the firefighters said that this town, for years, has been providing the finest equipment for the firefighters. And when firefighters come here, they see it, now with all the new trucks, but they see the right equipment. They don't see the cheap stuff, and, you know, this is an eight-year-old thing that we're now replacing. But, you know, I do get these social media videos from fire stations, and I see some fire departments getting excited about receiving the one that does the compressions automatically. And it's kind of interesting to say, well, we got them. So, I'm glad to see we're updating this item. Hopefully, I will not have to use it. Unfortunately, I live in an area where I see the, when I'm playing pickleball, I see the fire truck going with its lights flashing quite a bit. So, anyway, glad to see we're updating these and you're getting three, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Neal.
I go to Circle K and I swear I step into an interview. I happen to talk to a town member who, I guess, is penny-pinching the town's money, and was asked, if we already have them, why do they need them? I have always been, I've been law enforcement for the last 30 years of my life. I've always been for law enforcement and fire, first responders. And just for the citizens, if it saves one person's life, doesn't that pay for all three of them? Just, just wanted to put that out there.
Absolutely, all right. All right, at this time, I'll entertain a motion if there's no other comments.
So, I'll make a motion that we approve the Florence Fire Department to purchase three new LifePack 35 cardiac heart monitors from Stryker Sales LLC in an amount not to exceed $191,111.63.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other comments? No other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, all right, thank you, chief.
Thank you so much.
Item 13E, discussion approval, disapproval to enter into a cooperative use contract with Core Construction for the remodel of the Police Department Communications Center in an amount not to exceed $558,946.30. Commander Rickamuni.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Eaton, Vice Mayor Adams, members of council. The Florence Police Department received two grants, the total, approximately $2 million to upgrade the radio equipment and other equipment necessary to provide dispatching function to the citizens of Florence. With this acquisition of these products, it's going to require us to expand our dispatch center to accommodate future growth of citizens. So, this, this request for approval is to enter into contract with Core Construction to do the remodel of the dispatch center and in turn remodel the current dispatch center and make it accommodate officers for the, their office work.
All right.
Any questions?
Thank you very, any questions? Councilmember Bucelato.
When I first came onto council almost three years ago, that's crazy to say, because that went really fast, but I took the tour, and I went into the dispatch center, and I said, how can we help you? And they said, we just need new equipment, because sometimes these falter, and then we have to have other people take the calls. They didn't ask for anything extravagant. They didn't ask for new chairs. They didn't ask for a new fridge, a microwave. They literally asked for necessities. And the one thing I will say is that between our fire and our police department, you guys are so good at utilizing grants for everything that you can, that this is a very minute number to help accommodate and to support the needs of the fire department, or the police department, because you guys literally are working in a very small space compared to some other dispatch centers. And, you know, they're not asking for extravagant things. They're just asking for things that they need in order to do their jobs efficiently, safely, and to a standard. So, I think that this is long overdue. I wish we could have helped with more, but I'm so happy that you guys do utilize grants for every other thing that you guys can. I think that you guys are A-plus when it comes to that. So, just wanted to say that I did promise them at that time that I would try to help in any way that I could. So, I just wanted to say that, you know, you guys definitely have my support with this one. Thank you.
All right, very good. Any other? Vice Mayor.
I echo Councilmember Bucelato. I have also been in the police station, and I'm amazed that you're able to reconfigure, I guess, your break room and the
amazed that you're able to reconfigure, I guess, your break room and the dispatch center. And I think anything new, even if it's paint, new furniture, whatever we can do to make your work environment, especially for the dispatchers, right, who don't get fresh air during the day. So, I think this is a good thing. Thank you.
Councilmember Maldonado.
So, I'd like to echo my fellow Councilmember Bucelato. I came on with her and we talked about this. Like, we went through there. I was like, I was very amazed at what was done in such little space. And I also vowed, let's do something. And I wish we could, like, pour some water on it and make the building grow more, but that's not possible. But, trying to be smarter with the space that we have is great. And I'm glad that we're doing this because it's been long overdue. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, not seeing any, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion that we enter into cooperative use contract with Core Construction for the remodel of the Police Department Communication Center in an amount not to exceed $558,946.30.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not seeing any? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you, Commander.
Thank you.
All right. Item 15 is our call to the public. It's our second call to the public. If anyone online or in person wants to speak, please come to the podium or raise your hand online. All right, not seeing any. I'm now closing the second call to the public. Item 16 is called to the council for current events only. Councilmember Benson. Bert Bedford, let me do it. Let me start. I didn't have my list in front of me. Councilmember Bedford.
I thought you were going to go right to the left.
Tonight's been a real night.
First, I would like to say, I was honored to assist our council in the Jason Lopez Memorial Park. I can't wait till we, in December, to actually put something there to show people that Jason Lopez Memorial Park is now underway. The water tender truck, you guys did an excellent job. You really did. I think I'm going to go over there and take some pictures so everybody can see that I work with the fire department too. Lisa Garcia, I am so honored and so proud of you to have the Gabe Zimmerman Award. I am just proud. And, I'm proud of you. So, with that, we're going to have fun. Even though we can't go to the banquet, we're going to have a banquet, okay? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Benson.
Speaking of the banquet, Bruce, you don't play pickleball, and they're playing pickleball, and you don't golf. So, you need to take AJ. So, Paul, and I do too, as I told you, Lisa, I'm very proud of you and I'm honored that our town manager nominated you for the award. And he writes well, so obviously, from his military days, that it got accepted. So, congratulations. Quick thing, Paul, I stopped by the Wednesday night pool hours last week, and it looks like it's doing well. And family members are appreciative of the extended hours. So, it looks to be doing great. I appreciate your team doing that. With the incident that happened this weekend, I hope your team is doing well. I hope the individual, the child, is doing well. And we keep moving forward. So, it's nice that they were well-trained to be able to react quickly. So, I'm also looking forward to hopefully getting a demo invite for your AV equipment that's already installed in the Ruggles rooms. Is it going in this week in the other rooms?
Yes, Councilmember, the total install should be done by next Monday.
Ah, super. And the mayor's going to get to use it first, I think. He's got a big rotary thing or something there. Then I want to give a shout-out. I stopped by and also saw your team taking care of all those kids. And I went in there and they were all having fun. And to take care of that many kids and keep them excited and in those little chairs where nowhere else to go is a big task. So, appreciate your team. They're excited to do it. And then I know we're, is this our last council meeting? Do we have another one?
This is the last one for, yeah, for the month of July, we are not open for business in the month of July.
We're going to take a break from council meetings, but we won't take a break from reaching out to you all on things that are going up. Appreciate everything you all have done for the first half of the year for us. Look forward to what the second half brings with the new budget and so on. And I also hope that when we come back in August, we will see a presentation for a new ladder truck for the fire department.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Maldonado.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to say thank you, Mayor, for being able to come out last Friday to the El Slote and presenting a Flag Day proclamation. That was amazing. There were so many people that were so thankful for that. And bringing it to the locations where we're at versus having them come here. Second, was this past Saturday, I was honored to be at the 253rd Army National Guards Engineer Battalion's two-week training Hura. Basically, it was their time to have a barbecue and have fellowship amongst the soldiers. And I was able to go out there and help feed them and support them. And also, it just happened to be that it was the 250th birthday for the Army. So, that was amazing. So, we definitely got kudos from the command staff, so, for having some representation out there. And looking forward to those relationships with our Army National Guard here in Florence. And lastly, just thinking about it in my head, it was amazing that we were there earlier at Heritage Park. And we were there doing the ribbon-cutting ceremony. And just an hour or two later, we come over here, and now it's Jason Lopez Memorial Park. So, that's, it just blows my mind just thinking about it. We were out there doing the ribbon-cutting. It's Heritage Park, and we come out here, and it's Jason Lopez Memorial Park. So, it's just, I'm just carrying my head around it. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Neal.
Well, first off, I want to apologize for this light-bright hat I got on. It's glowing like crazy. The one, I would like to report that Bonnie Barriola is okay. She got into a fight with her phone. I'm pretty sure she lost the fight. I was about to tell Florence PD to go and charge her phone because it beat up pretty good earlier. But, I really want to say, Bonnie, thank you, Bonnie. You have always tried to look out for Florence. And if you don't feel appreciated, you are. Thank you so much. Secondly, I want to plug a little party we got going July 19th. Now, I know Florence is country-western. I grew up here. I love country music myself, but me and my big-legged old lady, we don't do no two-steppings. So, we're going to have us an R&B, kickback, old-school DJ chop, best DJ around. It's going to be doing the thing. It's going to be some cold drinks, kickback, good time. Please come out. It's going to be at the Vinnie Jones Library. Number three, some sad stuff, to Gabby, I'll call her Tyson, and to Mike Vasquez, they lost their mother, Andrea Smith. She was a great lady. Go for Thunthu. Rest in peace for her. To the Smith and Thurman family, my little cousin passed away, Dimitri, is a great guy. Great guy, hurts real bad. And just want to say, rest in peace to my little cousin. And number, love and prayers for the families. Number five, I have, just once again, you can't understand the pride I have in being a part of renaming that park. My partner, Fatty, that's the nickname we used to call him, Fatty. Like I say, we went to high school together. We worked at the Sheriff's Department together. He was a good dude. He was a great dude. And it, man, I'm bursting with joy for what we can do for the Lopez family today and right that wrong that they experienced 20-some years ago on the verge of his death when this council fumbled. So, I'm going to go to bed tonight with a smile from ear to ear. Go Gophers.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Adam.
I just want to follow up a little bit on what Councilmember Neal said. And I know each member of the family came up to all of us and thanked us. And I'm just, no, 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 no. We're all here to honor you and not to thank us. We didn't do anything so special. It's my honor to be part of a council. That it's unquestioned. I think we act in unison on anything like this, and it's a pleasure to be part of this team. So, first I want to give a shout-out to Chief Snyder. If you haven't been up to the museum, we have a 1957 Florence Fire Department fire truck. And we have had it restored twice. And I'm embarrassed to say that we were letting it go until this team came up. And you've got to see it. It is shining like it's new. It's gorgeous. It's going to be on-site, whether it's at 4th of July or at the Fireman's Banquet. And we want to see it in the parades. It's a beautiful truck. I am so impressed with having the tender here. And we have another one of Florence's Fire Department trucks. And we had intended to make it into a playground for children up at the museum, but I would offer it, we'll have some discussions if it makes sense to put it in Jason Lopez Memorial Park, because we have the fire tender there. And the difference is, if you ever get a chance to go to the Hall of Flame, they have a decommissioned truck where they welded, they took off any parts that children could get hurt on. They welded the doors open. They have mats all over the floor so the kids can climb all over it and play with it, right? And I think ultimately, that's what I'd like to see for this truck. It's nothing special, but it certainly is one of our actual fire department trucks. And we'd love to see something for the kids to play with. So, thank you very much. This May is one year that I've been on council. And I just want to mark time to show how far this council's come. Has nothing to do with me. It's just that I was on council for the six months starting in May. When I came to council, we were not in good shape. I spent hours and hours and hours going over the council agenda and looking at budget items because they weren't right. I wasn't comfortable with them. I didn't have a feeling of confidence. We had multiple shut-offs of water south of the hill where all of us lost our water for up to eight hours of a time. Hunt Highway and Attaway, they were all stalled because it's the railroad. It's San Carlos. Whatever the excuse of the moment was, we were not seeing any action on that. Services questions and our purchase order requests, questions went unanswered. We were in a crisis with the South wastewater treatment plant, and I do mean crisis. We were in executive session all the time. So, in September, we got our official town manager. In December, we got our new mayor sworn in and our new council members. And I will tell you, they hit the ground running. We have practically a brand-new leadership team. We have new directors. Our town manager has done an excellent job of recruiting the best of the best. Since January, and thank you, Mayor, for noticing, we just passed our 2026 budget without a hitch. And everyone acknowledges that the process went very well. It was thoroughly vetted. I hear nothing from our residents, so I'm hoping that's a good sign. We have not shut off our water once since we've had a town manager. Right? We're moving forward. Hunt Highway is on a roll. We're getting even more. We're getting a turning lane at Hunt and the 79. All these things are coming to pass. And I am really, really happy that Mr. Wayne Scott's here because I have not been in one executive session that we have not said wastewater treatment plant, whether it's north or south. And I want to thank everyone sitting at these tables. What you have done and the way we've seen the town come together, I think not even your town manager knows how much you all have jumped in to solve whatever the problem of the day is. And I see it and I really appreciate it. And I especially want to thank our leadership team, which is all of our directors. It's the mayor, our council, town manager. At this table, I've had the opportunity to work with all of you. I've seen Mr. Matisse Moore in six months than in 10 years listening to council meetings. And I just want to let the public know, you have an amazing team here, and we're just getting started. We have just started to move this ball forward. So, I want to thank everybody.
Thank you. And I am so sorry, Councilmember Bucelato. I went right over, it's been a Monday on a Tuesday tonight.
Don't ever let me go after Kathy again. That's all I'm going to say about this because now what I'm going to say isn't compared to what she's saying. But, I'm not going to pretty much echo what everybody has said, but I have the same sentiments. I did want to tell Paul personally up here that I am so proud of your team. I know I called you. I called your team manager. When my son messaged me on his break that that had happened at the pool, he was very proud of everybody that was there. And as I told you, he had saved somebody last year. And I just wanted to say that your training, I know they have to go through training every month, a certain amount of hours. I will say that your guys' training and diligence in selecting your crew and running a tight ship is why that child is here. An investigator from our office at my job assisted with the child, and he could not say better things about what your team did to help the child in need. He was proud. He said he would have never thought those were teenagers bringing that child back. And he said to give you kudos, and I'm going to link you up with his phone number after, because I'm sure he does want to tell you that personally. His child was having a birthday party there, and he had nothing but just phenomenal things to say about you, your staff, and the team that was there on Saturday. So, I just wanted to say, from the bottom of my heart, as a mother, as a council member, thank you for all you guys do. Second thing, I wanted to also commend Lisa Garcia for her Public Service Award. Very, very well-deserved. Not going to get too sentimental because I've already cried once tonight, and I'll keep that to a minimum, but you know what I think about you. I am very empowered by you, and I am very proud of you and all that you've done for our town over 30 years. So, I just wanted to tell you personally, thank you. And Bruce, I wanted to thank you for recognizing all that Lisa does. So, I just wanted to say on that note, see you in August.
All right, thank you very much. So, going last is terrible because all the stuff I write down prior to tonight gets crossed off as we go. So, I guess I'll just say ditto to what everybody said. There is a couple things, and it goes without saying. And Lisa, congratulations on your Gabe Zimmerman Award. Appreciate that. I do appreciate the staff and what we've gone through. And Ms. Barriola, you look younger every birthday. So, it's so good to see you in person instead of just seeing your name on the computer. So, with that, like others have said, we have no meetings in July, and we have one meeting in August. So, our first meeting will be in August. Of course, we are available and staff knows that there may, if there's a special meeting that has to be called, we will absolutely do that. The whole idea of kind of taking the month of July off is to give not only council members, not necessarily council members, but give our team a month to breathe a little bit. Because as you could imagine, the stress that we put on them by creating items, by following up by creating items, by following up on stuff, I think staff deserves a month to breathe. So, hopefully you guys breathe and have a little bit of vacation on that too. With that, for me, coffee with Keith tomorrow at the Senior Center. I say it every time. That is my favorite place to go because they have biscuits to gravy, three dollars for one biscuit. And, yeah, and so, no, we need more people. Because there's a lot of people that's not there that's went home. So, we need more people there. Twenty-five cents for a cup of coffee. So, again, with that, and then Kathy, I don't know, did you say where you were?
Station.
She's at the Station Coffee. Again, we advertise that. We don't bring an agenda. You bring yours to us. And if you want to sit down and just have conversation, we welcome that and we love that. So, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?